Do it. This is just a communication piece.
Automatically increases.
Well, what this is saying is.
And a different rate each year.
What this is communicating to the public is that it's a strategic priority to increase road maintenance across the village.
So this strategic plan does not bind us to anything within the strategic plan.
No, I know.
So every year during our budget process, we have to approve any road increases. You know, but this says, hey, one of our main objectives is to continue down this path or continue down this road.
Nice.
Of increasing, increasing funding for, for road maintenance. Um, I don't, I don't, it doesn't bind, doesn't bind me to it. It just says, we are going to attempt, if the budget allows, every year to add a hundred thousand dollars or more to our road budget. You know, we don't want to get in the circumstance that we were in 15 years ago.
No, I hear you and I'm, I'm very much in support of fixing roads and I always have been, but I, I don't like these, these adjustable increases. I mean, I realize we don't have to do it, but.
That.
It's there and sometimes for board members, it's easy to just say yes. And I don't want it to be too easy for them to do that. Not, not so much on roads, but just on things in general. Um, street sweeping program, um, add a structure underneath Sunset Beach Road for flooding. I don't know, there's, there's a lot of, a staffing committee for fire. I don't know.
And remember too, I'll add this commentary, that the strategic plan document is really an internal and external public relations document. So it helps staff understand what's the priorities of the village board. When I'm going through and creating a recommended budget, I want to know, is it a priority of the village board to increase funding in road maintenance? And if it's in here, I know that that's a priority and I got to try to find every way that I can to make sure that that objective is met, or at least on a recommended level, right? And then you're also communicating externally to the public is, what is your vision? What do you want to see moving forward from an organizational standpoint? Otherwise, the, the community doesn't really know, where are your priorities? This is hopefully trying to help them understand what your priorities are.
It, it helps you to get us to spend more and.
I wouldn't say that.
And. I don't know.
If I, you know, I'm a village resident, so as a village resident, if I'm opening up the strategic plan and I don't see something in here that talks about the, the need to incre- increase road maintenance efforts, I, I, I'm, I'm going to have some concerns because.
No, I, I, you know, and I get that, but. I don't know, I, I don't feel comfortable the way it is there.
Well, there's no dollars in it, there's no, no mention of actual funds.
No.
Um, it just says, increase road maintenance efforts. So the increase part doesn't say increased funding, it says increased road maintenance efforts at a minimum and, well, at a minimum and additional percentage.
Well, you know, increasing. Support high quality, well, and this too, 5.3 high quality commercial industrial development within the TIFs. Does that mean we're forming new TIFs or within the current ones?
No, it's just saying that you're utilizing development agreements.
So costs year after year increase anyways, so.
Mm-hmm.
But then there's going to be increase just because costs go up every year. So that, that pretty much covers it. There's, there's going to be an increase because.
When you wrote these, you were writing these using the idea of writing SMART goals, right? Do you remember?
As much as I could.
Yes, do you remember the definition of SMART goals? Could you share that?
Specific, measurable, attainable, relevant and timely.
So that's why these goals are written in this fa- in this fashion.
Yeah, I know, but.
That's, so for a goal to be a goal and for a goal to be measurable, it needs to be measurable and you have to put terminology in there to measure, are you doing what you're saying you're going to do? Otherwise, it just says, okay, let's do maintenance on roads. Well, what does that mean? Does that mean go filling a pothole? I mean, it, you know, it, we, we need more information. And then this update to 2019, I don't have any is- I, I went through.
It's not just roads and.
Okay.
It's not just roads and increase public access to the river and bay and I, I mean, I don't think we should necessarily be starting to buy up land on the bay either and.
Do you have a motion with regard to the strategic plan?
No.
So I think, first of all, hats off to staff, hats off to you, Alex, and our entire staff for putting this together, for putting a lot of thought into it, for really providing us with a roadmap as the leaders of this community. I think one of the things that, one of the successes that has come out of these plans in the past, Vicarry Village is a great example, you know, the vision of Vicarry Village and what it is now, you know, came from a document like this. And look at the success our community has had with the downtown Swamaco area. I shouldn't say Vicarry Village, downtown Swamaco.
Historic downtown.
Historic downtown Swamaco. So I think every piece of this and every section of this gives us that roadmap and that base just to kick things off of. Again, I, I've gone through it several different times. I appreciate the information added to it. You know, it's kind of funny, you, you bring up an ice rink. Growing up in Ashawalbunon, there were several ice rinks around the area and kids were always found back in the day to be out in their ice rinks. And it would be great to have a community ice rink at some, somewhere, you know, whether it be one of our ponds and what, you know, what it, but that's a starting point. To add that in there, it's a starting point. It's, hey, this is something that's important to the residents. So I appreciate it.
Just putting one in.
Howard Commons has one in.
Well, now it's the roller rink.
Well, let's, anyway, so I, so I guess it's, it's, so what we're dealing with is we've got a couple of things. Trustee Eckert sees the strategic plan in more specific terms and it has some concerns about that and she expressed her concern. Are there other concerns to be expressed? And you've expressed your, and I, personally, I, I guess from my perspective, I share your vision and, and your thoughts. To me, you got a roadmap and it's important that they are SMART goals to me, that they're written in that fashion. So I, I appreciate this, I see this as a roadmap. So when citizens say, what are you guys looking to do? Here it is. Doesn't mean we're going to do everything. It just means this is what we have. Are there others who'd like to comment?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024, 2026, or through 2026 strategic plan for the village of Swamaco as presented without any modifications.
Second. I had a second from trustee Andrews. Sorry, trustee Schneider.
That's why I went with that.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the strategic plan as written, no modifications from trustee Rotten. That has been seconded by trustee Andrews. Madam clerk, if you wouldn't mind, let's do a roll call on this as well. This is an important document.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rotten.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you, everyone. Good discussion again. Many good discussions. Okay, we are on to nine A. Planning, Plan, Commission and Zoning. Request by Robert and Marcus Van Der Leest for approval of a two lot certified survey map as prepared by Aaron Ballist T and T Professional Land Surveyors Incorporated for parcel SU 19 located on the northwest corner of Bayside Road and Norfield Road and zoned agriculture. Zoning administrator, Dunks, we get to hear from you for the first time this evening.
Lucky you.
That's what I was thinking.
We're looking at a 16.79 acre parcel here. It is currently zoned ag and it is expected to remain in agricultural use. As such, Brown County has not asked for wetland determination. They did ask that a note be added on the certified survey map noting that the requirement of a wetland determination prior to the issuance of any building permits, this is mainly being done for estate planning. Both lots do appear to meet the requirements of ag zoning. It is located outside the sewer service area, or it's actually outside the sewer, sewer service area, but shown to receive services at some point in the future. Right now, the closest water and sewer is about three miles away. Planning and zoning did recommend approval, which is the condition of meeting all other applicable ordinances, regulations and reviewing agencies.
All right.
I'll offer a motion to approve a two lot certified survey map as prepared by TNT surveyors for parcel SU 19 with the following conditions, that it meets requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, review and agencies.
I'll second.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the two lot certified survey map as stated by the provider of the motion trustee Rotten and seconded by trustee Romes. Any other further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, we are on to item number nine B. Request by Big Sky Real Estate for approval of a preliminary plat for Shidi Farms' second edition redraft of unrecorded portion of Shidi Farms' plat on SU 692 as prepared by Verbicker and located on the east side of West Line Road, 320 feet south of West Point Road. And once again, zoning administrator, Dunks.
Thank you. We have a 19, just over 19 acre parcel here. It was recently zoned to residential, is currently in ag use. This parcel is the remainder of the lands from the original Shidi Farms' preliminary plat. Eight lots of that preliminary plat along West Point Road were final platted a couple months ago. This is not coming forward as a final plat because it is now, what is proposed is a substantial change from the original preliminary plat. Thus, they have to replat it. The ditch grade requirements made the east to west portion of the original preliminary plat road difficult, if not impossible, likely would have required curb and gutter and additional storm sewer. This replat will result in three fewer lots and only a small cul-de-sac extension off the end of Prestene. Stormwater plan will still need to be completed and approved by the village. Sewer and water are not available at this time and no plans are made for any extension of those utilities. Wetland determination was completed and only affects a very small portion on lot 26. Developers agreement would need to be completed for the additional roads and/or stormwater facilities that may be required. Parkland fees are now due at building permit. Administrative fees of $200 per lot would be due at signing of the final plat. Recommendation from planning and zoning was for approval with three conditions, completing an approval of the stormwater plan, payment of the administrative fees and meeting the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
How many total lots are there?
One, two, three, four, five.
Eleven.
Okay.
Yep. Other questions for administrator, Dunks?
I just have a follow up.
Please do.
So educate me.
I can try.
Twenty-two thousand, good luck. Twenty-two thousand dollars for the, is the administrative fees? Is that just for those 11 lots?
That must be a typo.
That's what I thought.
Two thousand two hundred.
So I educated you.
I like the little bit bigger lots.
Are there representatives of Big Sky, would you like to come forward? Are there any questions?
No, I, I understand why you did what you did. I mean, it would have been very difficult to get stormwater management with the other design as presented.
Yep.
Are you working with the folks that are putting in TDS fiber to make sure, are they going to deadhead? What would they do at this point? Because they're in that area right now, so.
Yeah, but this isn't public right away yet and it won't be for a period of time. We won't let them go in.
So they don't do anything?
All right. Are they, are they running fiber to your other lots?
Yes, they are.
Okay, good. No, my only, obviously this is in my neighborhood and my only disappointment is the fact that I'm not going to be able to sneak out this back way anymore, out to, out to West Line. But I like your design, I like what you did to modify it to make up for your stormwater issues that you would have had.
As loud as your truck is, you don't sneak out anywhere.
Anything else?
And if somebody does sneak out there, you know who to look at.
Right. Thank you. Did you have anything?
I am on the side.
Did you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
No, Steve did a very good job.
May I offer up a motion, president?
Please do.
I'd like to make the motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Shidi Farms' second edition with the following conditions, completion and approval of a stormwater plan, payment of the administrative fees of $2,200, meets requirements of all of the applicable ordinances, regulations and reviewing agencies.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor from trustee Romes, seconded by trustee Rotten, to approve the preliminary plat with the conditions as stated. Any other further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your patience this evening. All right.
How many, how many building permits are pulled on those, on your new lots already? Three? Three?
There you go. Okay, we are moving on to item 10A, Resolution 23027, authorizing the acceptance of $2,000 in grant funding from the Wisconsin Public Service Foundation. Chief Bertler.
Thank you. Grant writer Ben Rogers and I applied for the Wisconsin Public Service Rewarding Responders Grant and were successfully awarded $2,000 for confined space rescue equipment. This grant will supplement an earlier grant we got from Capital Credit Union to provide some equipment in case Andy's men go down a hole and need rescue. So just looking for a motion to approve Resolution 23027, accepting the grant.
Any, any questions?
I'll make that motion, but before I do, Chief Bertler, I, I saw him at the Howard Commons last night and I learned something about Chief Bertler that, what instrument do you play?
The accordion.
The accordion. And just watching him in all of his glory was pretty amazing yesterday.
How is he?
He's actually quite good. I was there as well. He was, he was very good and the way you interacted with the crowd was, was, was great.
It was a good time.
I'm glad you give it back to the community that way.
I knew, once I saw your phone on, I'm like, oh, that may be dangerous.
I just want to know, are you going to have that on the truck as you're going in case the sirens go down, you can?
Hey, you never know.
Perhaps we need to get this on a future agenda to discuss the fundraising opportunities versus conflict of interest of Chief Bertler playing his accordion to raise money for the fire department. But until we can do that.
It's a thought.
Until we can do that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
You've been doing that a very long time, though. He doesn't know that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23027, authorizing the acceptance of $2,000 in a grant fund from the Wisconsin Public Service Foundation as presented. And thank you to WPS for that grant.
And the motion from trustee Rotten to approve Resolution, accepting the $2,000 with thanks to Wisconsin Public Service Foundation, and that was seconded by trustee Andrews. All those in, no, we need this as a roll call, please.
Trustee Rotten.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Public Works. Needs his SMART bowling shirt. Public Works and Utility Items, item 11A, Resolution 23030, authorizing a cooperative agreement with Tri-County Recycling. Director Smiths, if you would.
All right, thank you. Just like last year, the village submits to the Wisconsin DNR an application annually for a recycling grant, just like last year was the first year that they required a cooperative agreement with Brown County. Similar to that, we would be looking to have Resolution 2030 adopted tonight to accommodate their request and then create an eligibility for us to sign up for that annual grant.
Just to stay for the record that I'll abstain from this vote, being that I work for Waste Management, which is a competitor.
Okay, so trustee Rotten has abstained from this vote. Thank you.
What does this, so what is this getting us? I mean, just for education, is it just government preaching to citizens or?
It's an educational tool about recycling, the benefits of it. It's a way to share the information that maybe necessarily doesn't get shared in areas that Brown County or the DNR would like it to be shared. But like I said, it is part of the requirement as to submit for the grant that you have to have this agreement with Brown County or your local provider for your waste or recycling needs.
It just, I don't, I don't think citizens need more education on this. I, I think government preaches to them enough.
Have we done this in the past?
Yes, last year.
And what's changed from this, last year to this year?
Nothing. Last year was the first year that it was implemented and required by the DNR to be eligible for the grant. So all the years prior, we didn't need this agreement with Brown County. We just applied on our own, received our grant through the requirements that we satisfied. Just this last year in 2023, they required this to be as part of that grant.
Andy, do you recall the amount of the grant?
Normally, it's between 20 and 25,000 that we receive for our recycling fund.
What if we don't?
We wouldn't qualify for that funding.
For education?
Well, we wouldn't need all the requirements of the grant, which part of the grant is showing that we have signed an inter municipal agreement or an intergovernmental agreement with Brown County.
So really quickly, I'm, I'm pretty sure I understand this, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. The grant isn't just to pay for the education. The grant helps us with our recycling costs in general. But we have to submit to the education requirement in order to qualify for the grant.
Absolutely.
Are you allowed to, is it, is it like a, a pre-written educational thing that goes out to the citizens or?
We don't do anything additional other than post the information that's required as part of this agreement.
Okay.
It's all online. No physical or mailed copy of anything goes out, no brochures are forced out.
So it's for a person who seeks the education or chooses to obtain it. They're the ones who are getting, not forcing, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve passing the resolution of 23030 and signing of the agreement with Brown County.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor from trustee Schneider to approve, to approve the passing of Resolution 23030 and the assigning of the agreement with Brown County, and that was seconded by trustee Schneider.
Romes. Schneider made the motion.
Schneider made the motion, Romes seconded. Any other further questions or discussion? This will also, because I believe this is a resolution, we need this as a roll call vote as well?
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rotten.
I abstain.
I'm sorry, trustee Rotten abstained. President Venrazum.
Aye.
So it is six, five, one, one.
All right.
So on behalf of the recycling community, all the recyclers out there, there is not enough education out there. What people put in their recycling containers is unfreaking believable. So education is important for recycling, for anybody that has a single string MRF.
You think we're doing that by accident?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the added information as well. I mean, someone in your position is, you're the only one on this board who could offer that information, given your position. Thank you. All right, moving on, item 11B, accept Stankovich Lane as an official village roadway. Director Smiths.
All right, thank you. Stankovich Lane development is completed and ready to become accepted as a public street. Staff has been inspecting the project as it has been constructed and working with the developer to ensure all aspects have been met. Village Board needs to accept this roadway development for formality purposes, so the building department may issue building permits. There are none pending at this time, but someday there will be. Developer has completed all payments for the construction and everything is satisfactory. The road was paved this summer through our road reconstruction project. Potential motion would be that village board should approve or deny acceptance of Stankovich Lane.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of Stankovich Lane, even though the post office people are not going to like it.
Second.
So motion to accept Stankovich Lane as an official roadway was made by trustee Rotten and seconded by trustee Schneider. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right. Item 11C, Ordinance 2023-11, Amendment to Subdivision Ordinance, First Reading, Director Smiths.
Okay, the village's current municipal code under chapter 17 does not give the Public Works and Utility Commission the authority to change or create an exception to the code. If the commission wished to grant an exception to the subdivision ditch grade requirement, the village board first needs to modify this code. Attached is ordinance 2023-11, addressing the code modification. Copy below is how the code could or should read if the board would accept the recommendation from the Public Works and Utility Commission. We would be adding the, at the very bottom in red, unless a lesser or smaller grade is approved by the Public Works and Utilities Commission. This comes in when we're reviewing proposed subdivisions, any ditch grade that would be less than the current 2% longitudinal slope with that ditch, and this applies to any sort of conveyance system or anything that carries stormwater. The current code reads 2% minimum, and that was implemented just trying to reduce the amount of issues we have with stormwater in our village. It does not apply to all circumstances. Every area is different, soil conditions are different, topography is different. So with that being said, the committee feels comfortable by adding this to it that, you know, each situation is a case by case development and understanding what's being proposed.
No, I feel comfortable with that committee.
Yep.
I have a question. So why, why would you tie yourself down into smaller grade? Why not just, unless a different grade is approved in writing by the Public Works and Utilities Commission, is, is it just, Mike, it's ridiculous, we would never need a larger grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't need a larger, but you could, we didn't want to go, we didn't want to put another figure too small, what is smaller? We didn't want to say .25 or .5. We just left it as lesser so that it's questionable based on the development, based on soil conditions, topography, sloping and all.
There would never be a timing to 3%, though.
No. No, anything over, I mean, if you got two, you got something, you got water that's flowing well. In our village.
So can I, maybe this is being picky and to your point, exchanging the word smaller for a reduced grade?
Yeah.
I think that's more palatable terminology.
And I would also put a, put must be in writing, some sort, unless that's a standard part of what we do, so that it's clear determination by the reviewing party.
Okay.
Great, because we're not going to increase the grade, we'll always, if there's, if we're going to have a request, it's going to be to reduce a grade or?
Right, yep.
Well, they're not required, it's a 2% minimum, so if they want to go 3%, they don't need any additional approvals.
Oh, great, okay.
I dropped that already.
Well, he didn't catch it the first time.
No, he.
I did.
He got it.
So did you have a motion then?
This is the first reading only.
Oh, first reading.
He put both of them on there and that's why.
So is everybody comfortable with?
Is that a, is that a small enough change? Too, okay.
Yes.
No other further discussion on this?
Uh-uh.
Thank you. All right, discussion on future agenda items.
When is budget day again?
Thursday, October 12th.
Oh, it's right around the corner.
Alex, did you talk to Andy about?
Oh, it's a priority, Michelle.
Okay, next meeting?
Next week.
It's on the agenda.
The need study to look at impact fees or collection fees.
I got it on the agenda to review the proposals that will be given on Wednesday.
So I would just, I'd bring up one item, one item to put on a future agenda, item So, I would just, I'd bring up one item, one item to put on a future agenda item with the board's permission because there could be a potential cost aspect to it. So, on Saturday, we had the Tremble School rollout, right? There was a lot of visitors here for that, a lot of, it was, it was a great event. In kind of going through the grounds, which I held off going through those grounds for a period of time because I wanted to see the whole thing, I spent a lot of time there on Saturday. As I was going through there, and those of you who've been on the board for a while know that I was always very, very annoyed with the fact that we never had a fence there and we had all of that stuff in back and here we're trying to do this ancestry acres thing. And people drive by the road and see that. As I was walking there and looking at the grounds, it, it occurred to me, and I did check with Tim Rasmussen, and he shared some concerns about where the survey of that property, that, how, how that property is surveyed, the assumption of the property line is potentially incorrect, in that there is property that really belongs to ancestry acres that is not potentially ancestry acres, that is being assumed under the ownership of local residents and there is an accumulation of material on that, on those grounds. So, as he shared that, I thought it made sense maybe to take it to the board, if the board is interested in that, to refer to staff. If it hasn't been surveyed, that we have it surveyed and what that cost would be, but at first, we look at the, what that cost would be, if it makes sense to do that.
I believe all property pins have been located on that site already.
Okay.
I think Mike did that a few years back. Yes, if, if you're talking about the fence on the northern side, it is foot and a half, two feet on our side of the property line.
That fence was put up by the village, though, from what I understand.
Which, the split rail fence?
Yes.
I, I don't recall that village putting it, but that's like two feet on our side of the property line.
But if the village put it up, it's our fence, it's on our property, so it's not a big deal. So, there really is no issue. I, I thought there was concerns with the, the west side.
The west side, we know where that property corner is.
Okay, so there are no concerns? Okay.
I believe as you head from the eastern, the north corner of the, the privacy fence we put up and you head west, I believe they're fenced and some of their materials do impede onto village properties a little bit. They've always been there. If you look at the Brown County area, you'll see.
Okay.
What it is, but yes, that-
Again, if it's, if it's not particular, if it's not a concern for the board, not a concern for staff and?
Is there a risk of, you know, I don't know if the law on this or not, but is there a risk where if a person continues to occupy?
No. You can't adverse possession for, you can't adverse possess from a municipality.
Okay. No concern. All right. Not, never mind. Not an issue. Anything else? Okay, if there isn't anything else, then at this time, I would look for a motion to go to closed session.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll offer the motion to go to closed session and I have a second. Actually, I'll second Mr. Rodden. I'll second trustee Rodden's motion to go to closed session.
Wow.
Been a long meeting. So, there's a motion on the-
Good night, folks.
Motion, motion by trustee Rodden to go to closed session and I have seconded that motion. All in favor? We need a roll call on this?